Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to this afternoon's study session for the May City Council for Monday, July 1st, 2013. And the first, we're going to actually do review two agendas this evening before we go on, so we'll review the agenda for tonight and for next Monday night's regular council Page 2, items 2A and 3A. Items 3B and 3C. Items 3D and 3E. Items 3F and 3G. Items 3H through 4D. Items 4E through 4I. Vice Mayor?
If we could take off 4I, please. Off consent.
Debbie, Ms. Mayor?
Mayor and Council, 6A is going to be continued until next week, so the 8th, because of an agenda issue.
6A? Is 5A, Mr. Wesley, I know this is introduction.
Yes.
Do we want to, that's on consent, are we expecting?
We're supportive.
Well, I know you're supportive.
No, 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 no.
Are we expecting anyone to pull it off? Are we going to go through the full presentation on it, or?
Mayor, we've been getting emails in support. We're not expecting anybody here in opposition this evening.
Okay.
Overwhelmingly supportive.
I do have some questions on some specifics on that. Don't know if I want to bring them up now or bring them up later, but driveway lengths.
Right. Mayor, you did mention that this morning.
Architecture.
And if we want to make any adjustments to the stipulations today would be the time to do that.
Okay.
So they're part of the ordinance that's introduced, the issues that you brought up, and again, they have to do with the setback for the garage. Right now, it's a minimum of three feet. That does create the potential where a driveway is six or seven or eight feet, and so somebody feels like they can start to park in there when they're really in and out.
It's how they feel like they will park.
And so what we've done in other projects is create an area in there, you're either less than five feet or you're at least 18 feet, so you don't have that in between.
Yeah.
And so if you'd like to add that stick, we could, but we also have to go back through the design review process where we'll have an opportunity to.
Now, the other question I have is, you know, I know there's a designer review process, but I'm not wholly comfortable approving a zoning and going forward without knowing exactly, on a project like this, without knowing what the, what the design components are going to be. Especially this one, where actually the, the back of the house is the front of the house.
Correct.
From a street scape standpoint, I'm a little underwhelmed by the pictures that I saw as far as the, as far as the architecture, that I get it that that's the garage, but that's also when people drive down that, what they're going to see, and there's not a whole lot of variety or components, there's a lot of, a lot of blank walls without architecture thing. How are we, how do I feel comfortable that that's going to be taken care of before we approve this concept? And I didn't see a whole lot of very, very details on the landscaping in front, how that walkway is going to be in front of the house and those kind of things. I know that normally that's taken up as part of the technical nature of this, but if we're going to allow that kind of development, I think there needs to be some kind of a surety and some kind of more specificity on what's going to happen before we give the, before the plat. It seems like those need to be more joined together.
Okay. Mayor, a couple of responses I can have for that is, one, in the development agreement that was approved with this previously, when this case went through back in 2008, one of the conditions there is that the owner will need to continue the architectural development of the new product to meet the requirements of this section, provide high quality buildings and landscape design, so that will be one of the requirements. And then also, it's stepped for actual design review board approval of their products as opposed to just staff, so we'll have that, that opportunity to address those quality issues. We agree that what they've provided at this point is fairly minimal, and we'll be working with them to raise the bar.
Okay. Because this is a unique, whenever you go to this high density, this is a unique kind of process, and it's not your normal 50, 60 wide lot. The architecture and the landscaping are integral to how the entire feel of the, of the project is. And if you miss on one of those, the entire thing misses. So if that's going through a development agreement and what you're telling me, we're going to have to trust the staff to make sure that those, when you say high quality, it's not only high quality, but it's very specific to this type of higher density development where you got to make sure you hit or you're hitting on all cylinders.
Correct, Mayor. It's the staff and the designer review board will be, have that responsibility for actually approving this product as opposed to staff.
I'm going to trust them that you will make sure that that happens.
Yes, sir.
All right. July, yeah.
On that same issue, I know they're modifying slightly the density, the residential component, but is that changing any of the commercial hospitality component of this process?
No.
Same acreage? It's, it's just a modification of that?
Mayor, Councilmember Summers, all of that is the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Parking adequate on that? How, how wide are those? I'm assuming we're not having any parking between, now this is a technical issue, but on the other hand, it didn't seem like there was a whole lot of off-street parking because there are no streets, it was basically all alleyways.
Mayor, they've provided parking areas distributed around the site at various ends of the blocks.
Okay. You feel comfortable that there's adequate there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, July 8th, regular council meeting. Page 2, items 3A and 4A. Items 4B through 4D. Items 4E and 4F. Items 4G and 4H. Items 4I through 5B. Items 5C through 5I.
Mayor.
Mr. Brady?
Just when this item comes back on the 8th, we'll be combining.
Which item?
5F and 5G. It'll be one resolution for the two items. I think that's what we figured, that's more efficient, we just so, it won't look like it's missing, it's just easier to do those in one resolution.
Items 6A through 6C. Items 6D through 6G. God, I think this is a record for zoning cases, last five years.
Coming back.
And items 6H through 8A. And then, of course, we'll also have item 6A from the July 1st that'll be included here, right?
Yes.
And that was?
6A will be added.
Water, multi-unit dwelling water services. Okay? All righty. Oh, right. Next item on the agenda is to hear a presentation discussed and provide direction on proposed future capital improvement program. Mr. Brady?
So Mayor, we've provided council a listing attached to this item of the proposed bond projects. They're grouped by the different categories by which they would be identified on the ballot, so as it would be proposed, as of the projects we've talked about today, under the streets category question, there would be 27 million set aside for street reconstructions. Then it'd be 29 million for what we refer to as economic development projects. There's a list of types, the city share, the Fiesta District, Phase 2, Gateway Airport, beginning to do some of the design environmental projects there. Neighborhood and safety is another category of 22.8 million. We've identified projects such as the Mesa Drive, Phase 2, right-of-way improvements including First Avenue, 10th Street as a multimodal project. Again, we've talked about improving, continuing our replacement of rusted street lights as well as street light improvements. That total for streets would be 79.1 million dollars as proposed today. Under public safety projects, we've identified communications, and I think it looks like we put the fire communication center under fire and medical, but it probably would move up into that, this category today where we have it called 6.4 million. I think that we'd move the 16 million dollars from the fire communication center up to that category, so we'd have a 22.4 million dollar category under communications. The police grouping would remain the same at 7.8. And then we would have fire and medical, that would just include, that would include, oh, let me, sorry, let me go back to police. Police would include the helicopter replacement, the hangar remodeling, additional evidence freezer, improvements to the holding facility, as well as security hardening around the shooting range. Under fire and medical, we would include then fire, the fire apparatus replacement program, fire station 203. This would be the building construction and also improvements to the public safety training facility, burn room. So the public safety category would then be for a total of 51.7 million dollars. The third category that we discussed last week, and I think the council should have already received some additional backup information, is that the Cactus League Museum has requested that, that an item be placed on the ballot. They would request the item for the Spring Training Museum be placed on the ballot, and that would be at this time at 17 million dollars, 17.1 for the cost of selling the bonds. So for a total of all three, now each one of them would be standalone and would be voted on separately, the three, but the total package combining all three, I believe that total is 147.9 million dollars. So those are the projects that have been identified, and if seeking counsel direction to, this is what we'd like to move forward, we would present those items, those three questions in a resolution to call the election. We would do that for a week from tonight and present that to you. My one request, I think that would be helpful for us to have before the 8th, for our planning purposes and the budget, as we do for all our capital improvement projects, is to begin identifying the operational costs for all these projects as they come online, what would be the operational impacts to the city, if any. Many of these don't, usually the street projects, or if we're replacing apparatus, it's already in the replacement program, they wouldn't necessarily, but we would want to know the operational impacts, so we can begin anticipating and planning those in our forecast.
Thank you. Councilman Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the recommendations, and I agree with what, what we have presented here, but I also agree with what Mr. Brady indicated about the further refinement of operations costs. I think the more detail we can get and be working on that, it will be important. I think that's particularly important for the, the fire communication center and the Spring Training Museum, which are, are major projects, but we want to really understand how, what the operational cost would be, how that would be phased in and things like that, so I think that would be helpful. And I only had one question, and maybe it's not here or maybe somewhere else, was, there's some other way you're addressing the VHF radio support needs other than in this particular package?
Thank you, Councilman Mayor, Councilman Kavanaugh. I believe as we, the original, or in one of the original lists, we had identified an amount of about 1.8 million. I think after further discussion, that may be a fairly more robust than what was, what's actually, that was really replicating what's being done in Phoenix. My understanding, there's a number that's much less than that, that's closer to $400,000. I think what we would do, I wouldn't, I think because of that, most of that is technology based, it's not really capital infrastructure, as we, I think we'd want to work maybe with the.
You can handle it.
Fire medical, look at if there's a way in the next year or two, I mean, again, even if this were in a bond program, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be something that would come forward next year, it'd be over a two or three-year period. What I hope is maybe over the next year or two, maybe we can work with the fire department and through grants or other things, try to find funds within the general fund, maybe savings in the fire department or something, so we can make that a priority within their budget to fund.
Right.
As opposed to making a part of a bond program.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Higgins?
Are we having a presentation from the chief on the communication center? Were we doing that today?
If you have questions.
No, okay, I thought there was something formal.
We could, I mean, I don't know if there's, I think we were kind of waiting for specific questions.
The server just went down, just so, both of us have no servers, so, but yeah, I guess I have a question, like we talked the other study session the other day, they discussed what their plan was, I heard Councilmember Kavanaugh talk about a little bit about, and Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Chief, why don't you come up?
So I just wondered, what I didn't hear was the discussion of, I don't want to call it like a virtual communication center, where, you know, the networking and every, all the cabling and everything you need to go live with a communication center is somewhere in the city. You know, I just throw out, you know, we have backup, the EEOC at ASU Polytechnic Campus for the state is in the city of Mesa already, you know, so we have like things, not things, assets we could possibly use. If we're trying to get far away from downtown Mesa for a backup center, he's Mesa, the library, the multi-gen center, all large brick and mortar, that, you know, if we brought the right cabling or whatever y'all need to bring in some, what, again, hardware and setup, you know, as opposed to building a, my paper went away, so was it, what, for millions of dollars? Thanks.
Mayor, Councilwoman Higgins?
Okay.
Thanks for the question. I think the short answer would be that any facility or any location that could support the, the operational needs that we have for both redundancy and backup, for a really basic dispatch service that the city provides, not only within the city, but from the fire medical perspective within the region, would be, as long as it's functional, we really, it's really, we want to make the best decision, not only for the expenses, but also for the community in terms of what the location should be, but that, that is yet to be determined as it would be with a fire station or any other construction site.
But what I didn't hear talk of was, you know, we talked about different type of, you know, a brick and mortar, ground up, my fellow councilmembers discussed, you know, redoing a big, what's it called? Big box. But what I didn't hear is the, you know, I'm calling it virtual, but that might not be the right word, but, you know, maybe, maybe Mr. DeShuck can help me with whatever, but you know what I'm trying to say?
Councilwoman Higgins, and I think the chief and I talked about this a little bit, I think what we were trying to emphasize, the point here is the, the operations, the purpose, the function of what we're trying to accomplish. And I think we want to have the flexibility, chief, is that correct, that to look and see how we can provide that, the technology, the functionality, wherever it might be, and not necessarily focus on that it necessarily needs to be, and it could be, a building, or could it be that we could put the consoles and move, bring the, the network systems and the equipment either to an existing building we have, I'm not sure if we have something like that, or, or facilities or an area where we already own land, for example, the area around the public safety academies. I see, we still think we want to kind of explore those options, is that correct, chief?
Yeah, that's correct. Probably the main reason at this point is number one, we're really looking for a, a facility that would be on a separate power grid from our current communications facility, so in the event that we would have a power outage, we would have a better chance of both, both facilities not going down at the same time. The other advantages, in most communities, they talk about having a backup center. Usually that's a, that's a dark center, that's just sitting there waiting until something happens to see if we, we need to use it. The plan that we're proposing would actually bring up two fully operational facilities that are, that are underway at the same time, so the, so the, the maintenance of those facilities, the inner workings of those facilities, as there would be updates made to processes and, and systems would be part and parcel to the daily operation, so that it would be a seamless transfer to the backup facility that we would be talking about, because essentially we would have two frontline facilities, each would have the ability to be the backup for the other. So I, I think that that's, that's a key part. In terms of location, obviously wherever there's infrastructure available to supply the communication needs that we would have for the facility, would be a reduction in cost in terms of bringing that utility onsite. There are several locations in the city, as the city manager mentioned, our training facility is just in the process of getting fiber brought into that location right now, and once you get one feed in there, the capacity is such that we, it could handle most of what we want, but it's also in a good location in terms of where it is in Mesa, that it would be a, a good and easy microwave shot. I'm certainly not a technician, but there are multiple infrastructure systems that go into making one of these centers redundant, and so there's a lot of different locations that we could look at to accomplish that.
So we're, are we looking for a backup communication center, or it sounds like you're looking for an additional communication center, is what I heard you just say, that's live all the time?
Well, we're looking for a live center that can functions also as a backup, and that would also allow our current facility to function the same way. So that, that's, again, that's a facility redundancy, that's very standard, in fact, it's basic in municipalities the size of Mesa, not to mention sort of the regional arrangement that we have for fire and medical, which serves over a million people. We currently do not have that sort of dependability, redundancy and backup capability. What we've experienced recently with some of the difficulties with the current facility is that we have had to really use Band-Aids and really search for various systems to come together, whether it be here or other areas within the valley, to make, to get us through a situation that we've even planned in advance for. Even with that, the capacity and the capability provided during that, with that approach, cuts our functionality by at least 40% to 50%. I mean, we don't have the capacity for 911 calls, we don't have the capacity and ability to do the dispatches, and, and certainly not the data centers to send the data out to the mobile computers for different dispatch functions as well. So we're really in a position that, we're, we're really at a, in a critical place where we need to begin to develop the capacity for that. Typically, the strategy that we're talking about, about having two facilities on different power grids would not only provide for the backup, but also provide for the redundancy.
So are we looking at like putting police in one center and fire in another, or are, what, you know, or are we looking at a little police and fire, little units, what's the, what are you thinking?
Well, the concept right now is it would be police in one center and fire in the other center. It could be, it could be any combination. Again, what we're looking for is the functionality of having the dependability that backup and redundancy brings to the table, plus an added feature of that would be some flexibility. As you know, fire and medical is exploring a lot of different ways of deployment, where we've moved from the one-size-fits-all to the much more efficient TRV program. It's very difficult right now, operating within the same architecture, to be able to accomplish both at the same time, not to mention access to data that we need to be more flexible and be able to make adaptive deployment decisions on the fly. Again, to maximize our resources, reduce costs, and not only maintain, but actually improve service levels.
Thank you. Thanks.
So to summarize, if I hear you right, when we say communication center, we're not talking about a building as much as we're talking about a process.
Correct.
Or a function, is a better word, a function.
That's correct, Mayor.
Which might take place in whatever we can find is the best and most efficient and effective way to do it. Could be an existing building, could be a reuse of a building or a repurposing of a building, it could be a new building. You're asking us to include this ability that regardless of where this goes, to have the bonding capacity to finance that, regardless of what physical location it might be in.
Correct.
We can decide then, when you, when you do that detailed study to figure out exactly how that's going to work, how much of this bonding capacity will be needed and where we will, where we'll actually apply that. Is that a good summary?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Summers?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very interesting and yet complex issue when you deal with communications, and it seems as simple as having an iPhone. I've been tasked by the National League of Cities to represent that entity on, well, the SafeCom, which deals with interoperability of communications for public safety, and FirstNet. And FirstNet is tasked with putting together the nation's first nationwide public safety broadband network. It's essentially data communications for public safety. And I had the privilege of providing an update on that process to NLC, to the Information Technology Committee of NLC, also the Public Safety Committee, and afterwards, in a acronym-rich environment, which I would have paid about $30,000 to the mayor's phone had I, had I been there. And I actually, I actually tried to simplify it, the, the leadoff question for this was as simple as, what is LTE? And not knowing what LTE tells you that if you have an information technology group of policymakers wondering what LTE stands for, this is a complex issue. What comes out of it is that the nature of communications and public safety is going to change immeasurably over the course of the next decade. The FirstNet will be putting together a broadband communication network that will not only deal with the voice communications, the telephones, the radios, the VHF, and limited data capabilities that we have now and we're currently utilizing, and will change the world for communications, the ability to have real-time GIS, to have real-time data transmitted from the scene to the data center, to the EOC that Councilwoman Higgins mentioned, and have incident managers be able to give real-time feedback to, to uplink with the weather service and other critical entities. And you, you think about the, the tragedy that hit us here just last night. One of the possibilities of utilizing these systems is in, in protecting our firefighters because it will link to weather, it'll link to, to other entities, it will project where fire is going and be able to move resources in a way that protects communities, but also protects firefighters, and the police department, the, the opportunities that they're going to have are going to far exceed that. We have to have the capacity to integrate this new technology into our communication center, and that's what this bond really represents, is the ability to adapt to something we know is coming. This isn't what might happen, this is what's going to happen. We see that infrastructure being developed, so the, so this is an investment in protecting our community and also being able to, to, to fully integrate those new technologies that will be moved forward. That said, I do have one question for you, is there's a huge discrepancy, VHF, the VHS radio system is different than the LTE, so there's a difference right now between voice communication and this data communication that's going to take place, and that will continue for the foreseeable future, so we're going to need to continue to invest in our land mobile radio, our VHF side. There's a big discrepancy in the numbers between 400,000 and 1.8 million, and I just want to make certain that we're going to have the capacity to make those investments in the mobile radio system. So where are we in the spectrum of 400,000 to 1.8 million? Are we going to be able to find that money in the short term to invest in the system? Because I know we need to get it active soon. That was a long question, I apologize, but.
Councilmember Summers, Mayor, the, the transition to long-term evolutionary data transfer on a national level has been underway probably three years now. I also sit on a steering committee at the state level for public safety, similar to the council member, only not in Washington DC, locally. Clearly, this is a, a transition that's going to evolve over several years. I think that 10 years is ambitious, if everything works just right, it could be, but it's something that we're going to be dealing with as public safety. As you may recall, this ability for data is really exclusively for public safety. The FCC dedicated the frequencies just for public safety to do this. So we will, as a community, have an opportunity in the future to transition to the ability to take advantage of this national network. At this point, it doesn't appear that there would be a requirement for such a thing, but surely would be to our advantage, especially from a law enforcement perspective, where you're looking at the ability to evaluate a person's criminal history on a national level from a mobile position. level from a mobile position rather than from a desktop somewhere. So clearly, we would want to develop the ability to do that as we, as we do the construction. I'm not sure to what extent, in terms of our ability to this, to do this center, we would, there would even be the technology available that would allow us to put it in place. But-
No, and I apologize for confusing the two issues because the, we can't put that in place because we don't know what the network architecture or the protocols are going to be. But we still have to consider, we could still narrow that down to what the possibilities for that infrastructure and the protocols are in limiting our, limiting our site selection to areas that are going to be able to smort the broadest possible application of that broadband technology. But more to the point, it's, it's, the radio, the VHF radio system will still be an integral part of this, at least for the next 10 years, and we need to continue to make investments in that. We were talking about bonding 1.8 million dollars for it, but we need that in the shorter term that perhaps the bond would account for. But my concern is that the range between 400,000 and 1.8 is a wide swing. And I want to make certain that the number, that we're comfortable, we're going to be able to absorb that either through the, you pay for it out of the general fund, or a combination of general fund and other sources, that we're ready for that. Because that's critical voice communication that our firefighters and police officers and others are going to need to operate today. So, I mean, where are we on that? Why is it such a wide swing? Have we been able to refine that number, more specifically the 400,000? Or is this, we don't, it's somewhere in this large range? We're not sure.
Councilmember Summers.
Basically, the difference in there, the original amount that was given to us was approximately 550, 600,000 to upgrade our current VHF. During that time, someone did come up with the number 400,000. I'm not sure what that's based on or where that came from. But the 1.8 million, the difference between the two prices, the 550 and the 1.8, has to do with user identification. Basically, on the lower scale, the 550 to 600,000, what you're talking with that is if the firefighter keys the radio, dispatch will know that there's a firefighter there, and they'll be able to hear them and talk with them. On the 1.8 million model, basically, if firefighter keys the radio, dispatch will know who that firefighter is. So that's the difference between the two, the two levels on this.
Well, I know Phoenix is implementing that, that system of individual radio identification. So the question is, if we choose not to do that here, do those systems still, are they still interoperable?
The radio frequencies and stuff would be interoperable, but they will not be able to identify our users on this system.
But they will be able to, so it's engine 201?
No. All they would know is the VHF radio is being transmitted.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Spring Training Museum. Were we going to have some kind of a-
Oh, I didn't know it was a closing for a question.
And is, is that how it's going to show up? Because is that the best identifier of really what it is?
I'm open to any other-
I mean, judging from the, judging from the description and the media reports, and also I think the, what we got, I think there was something that was broader than the Cactus League experience that was envisioned there, expanding programs and everything in there. And I think that maybe just calling it a spring training museum is somewhat limiting. And I don't know, unless I'm missing something.
I'm kind of using what I was given. So, there's the Cactus League experience, but that, I don't know if that helps describe... Oh, are they here?
That's why I was, I was waiting for them to say, Robert or Lisa or someone, come on up and let's talk about this.
Yeah, and, you know, at some point, even what's on the ballot, what we put here is one thing, but the ballot will be pretty restrictive in the words we can use, too.
Which is why I want to go over it a little bit right now, to make sure that what we're talking about, and we're talking about a lot of money here, and, and, thank you, Lisa, for coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Explain just very briefly what, what you envision this facility accomplishing.
Well, it's more than a museum, as you stated, Mr. Mayor. It would be a place to springboard development for the Riverview area, and also tourism development in the city. We envision it being, a portion of it being dedicated to spring training history, Cactus League history, but there would be a number of other activities that would involve a broad range of, of partners without, throughout the community, that would fall in different sectors, some tourism, some other areas of community development. And so we've outlined a few of those in the proposal for you that we foresee that we could develop.
So this is now growth of the Cactus League experience, which wasn't, which was never, and the reason why I'm going to pre-spring training, I've never heard this identified as a spring training museum. It was a Cactus League experience.
Yeah.
It was a display, it was, it was always about an interactive type of experience that introduced not only to Cactus League, but to baseball in general. And based on your, what you submitted to us, that you, as I understood it, maybe I understood it wrong, that was to be the basis of this, and the basis, because that's what we have. We have that experience, we've had that, we have those collections, but they go beyond just spring training. And it seems like that's a nice foundation to work from, to create other types of experiences that all fit in with the, with the baseball, the winter visitor, the spring, that type of experience.
That's exactly right. This goes along with our philosophy at the Mesa Historical Museum of utilizing our heritage resources for beyond just exhibitions, but the exhibition that we've developed over the last eight, well, I guess six years for this Cactus League project will be, you know, the foundation for the museum. We have a large collection, so utilizing the resources that we have in the collection and that we have in terms of programming, beyond just exhibition will be vital to the success of the project. But certainly, the core will be the collection and the experience that we can bring in bringing the Cactus League to life. And certainly, the name is definitely something we'd like to work with the city on. But I will say that we specifically focused on the word "spring training" instead of "Cactus League," because we found out over the last several years, as we have developed this project and have tested it in different markets around the valley, that people know they're here for spring training, but they don't necessarily identify strongly with the Cactus League. So as you know it, it's been Play Ball, the Cactus League Experience, but now we've been using this term, the Arizona Spring Training Experience and Museum, both purposely using the words Arizona to make it broad, to make sure that we understand this is bringing all of Arizona baseball history into Mesa, into one place. And then the word "experience" because it's not just an exhibition at the point that we, we want to take it.
And I appreciate that, because, you know, I guess my purpose is, if we're going to give you a chance to go sell this to the community, I want whatever we approve, whatever's on the ballot, to be the most descriptive as far as not only what we're doing, but what we hope to accomplish by this.
Yes.
I don't want to be, we've learned in the past that when we didn't pay very, very close attention to how we worded things on ballots, that the elections did not turn out like I think they would have had we been more careful in how we looked at it and what we approved. So I just want to make sure we're there. Mr. Richards.
I appreciated reading in the proposal, the correlation between a museum that's been done at another location in the country, in Cincinnati, the Cincinnati Rids Museum. And over last week, I had an opportunity to visit with a friend of mine from Cincinnati who's attended that museum, and was familiar with how it worked. And he went on and on about its success and its business model, and how it worked, and how many times he had been there to visit it, and kind of its place in the community. And, you know, I was, I'm really hoping to see that this can kind of achieve the same thing. And, you know, hopefully, it can be somewhere near the new spring training venue for the Cubs, because I think there's a lot of energy that could be built there, you know, in the vision of Wrigleyville. So, you know, it's something that, that, as I've gone through it and talked to different people, I think it's something that we could really make successful here in Mesa, and looking forward to at least put it before the voters and hear back from them if they agree that this is a good opportunity. So there'd be a lot of work involved in running campaigns for all of our bond questions. You know, it's, we've, we've gone to the ballot box quite a bit for this kind of thing over the last five years. But I think the public has shown its trust, and I for one wouldn't want to violate that trust, but I think that this is an opportunity worthy of discussion.
Okay. Any other questions? I think I have a lot of questions, because I think so far what we've gotten, this is unique, and this is, this is not normally how these things come about. This was somewhat of a late entry from, frankly, a non-city agency, although we are connected at the hip with the Historical Society. We have been the major, the major funders of the Cactus League, or spring training, or whatever, and number two doesn't even come close. And we've been willing to do that because it's been a positive thing for us. You know, this is a big step. And I guess my feelings are, and I think Councilmember Richen sort of said it, if this were a city function, I'd be thinking very, very carefully about it, but based on where it came from, the group that it came from, you know, I'm willing to let you have your swing, okay?
Nice.
And see, because I think it's important enough for the community, and you've done a lot of work on it, and I think it's important, and I would support it, putting it before the voters to see what they think about it. I don't know that this is something, if we went through a normal deal, maybe we wouldn't come up with this. Maybe this would, because we now start getting into priorities and not priorities, and that's a little unfair in this situation, because we don't look at this as, do we do this versus that? I think this is in response to the fact that we believe this is a valuable asset that we've created, and that we can build even bigger. And, you know, I'm willing to let you and the group really have a shot at, at selling that to the community, and seeing if that's, that's the way to go. The questions I have, we can't answer today, but I think we'll answer as we go forward. I think that there needs, my personal opinion is, if we're, to move forward, it needs to be a joint, really a partnership. And I think that participation from the community, from those who love baseball, is essential. What that level is, I think we need to determine. It needs to be, I think, significant enough that it shows a real public-private partnership. I think there are questions on operations going forward, and what the, what the, the cities, what the expectations are for city. It's not like we have a whole lot of stuff floating around that we can throw into this. And I also think it's some area that I'd like to know more about what the Historical Society's and those involved with this have in mind as far as covering operations until this is really self-sufficient. We don't have to answer those today, because once again, I think by moving forward, this doesn't set it in stone, but it does, it does put it up there so that if, so you can have a chance. I think it's important enough to give people a chance to at least say yea or nay on. That's my personal feelings on it.
Yeah. And I think you hit it, you know, some of the questions I was going to ask, but the public is going to want and answer those questions before they vote yes on it. And so that's, that's your time window, is we can put things on the ballot, but you're going to have to answer those questions to the public, so.
And I think that comes in with a more specific plan, which I'm sure you will do, a more specific idea of how this public-private might work, to what level. You know, we have 17 million here. I don't have enough detail to know whether, what that actually specifically gets us, and how much that we should ask of the, of the, those of you who are promoting this to really come in and be part of that. You know, is that $1? Is that $10 million? I'm sure it's probably somewhere between. That, I agree with Councilmember Richens, that's something that you're going to have to bring out the details before we get to the, to election time. You've got a lot of time to do that. But I'm, I'd like to see, I'd like to see what you come up with, because I, we've been talking about this concept for a long time. You know, this was, this was something which was envisioned. I know Robert Brenton talked about it a long time, and we talked about how to fill out the, our museum and our complete, we're the natural place for it, which is why the city has stepped up from day one to support this at levels unmatched by others. And we'd love to see if this can have a permanent place in Mesa.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any question, any other questions for Lisa? Okay. So if this does go in and does get approved, you got your work set up for you.
So Lisa, can you help, let's work on, because right now, my document, the document gave us, it's called the Arizona Spring Training Experience and Museum.
Yes.
And then maybe, I just, you know-
If we're okay with that? Okay.
Well, by next week, let's just make sure, and Debbie, you have to tell us what we approve and what ends up on the ballot. I just want to make sure that we're clear as so clear.
Okay.
And we don't put, we don't approve something next week.
We'll have that.
Yeah, that all of a sudden we go, darn, I wish we would have said this, because now we have to go on the ballots, this and this. And I want to give you guys every chance to, to succeed. And if you're going out there and you have a description or a title that somehow limits it, and like I said, we went through this last election, where we had some titles on what should have been some lay-down questions, very, very mundane technical issues on city procedure, and frankly, we got a little, we didn't have the best example, and when people don't understand, they will vote no. If there's any confusion at all, they will vote no. That's how it works on these things. And I, I just want to make sure we're set up to where we can feel confident that, based on the restrictions and limitations we have on our wording, that you feel comfortable with this. I don't really care what you call it. I just want you and everyone to say, okay, this is what we have.
Okay.
And go for it.
Okay.
Okay? Does that make sense? And we can do that, since it's a resolution, we can do that before next week.
Yeah, we'll put that in, it'll be in your packet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just getting the difference between an ordinance and a resolution, we're not submitting, we can go up to the last, till we post it, and with what we've got.
Right. Yeah, we can even talk about it-
We can change it Monday night.
Change it Monday night, because it's a resolution.
Yeah, no, we'll put it on the, it'll be posted on the agenda, so we can-
Right, we can change it, because it's a resolution, we can change it. Got you.
On a white board.
Okay.
We can do that, too.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Speak now. I guess I can't ask you to forever hold your peace, but at least speak now. How about that? All right. Next item, appointments to boards and committees. This is not a totally complete list, this is filling, I think, the vast majority of openings that we have and reappointments that we have on our committees. There are still a few that are yet to be done, which we hope to get either by next week or right after break. We have motion to approve by Councilmember Kavanaugh, second Councilmember Summers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Acknowledged receipts of boards and minutes, boards and minutes, of minutes of boards and committees. Motion by Councilmember Glover, second by Councilmember Higgins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Here reports on meetings and conferences attended. Any reports?
Yeah, we'll give a little more time.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Brady.
While Mesa celebrated the fourth on Saturday, the rest of the world will do it this coming Thursday, so we won't be having a council study session on Thursday, so we'll see you next Monday.
Anyway, we can't, we'll see you next Monday. We can't go away without telling everybody, thank you. Sartoma Club, Southwest Ambulance, all the other sponsors, a great night for festivities in a new location. Got generally positive remark, or comments back from the setup, so we appreciate everyone for being involved in the celebration of freedom, the fourth celebration of freedom. And we'll talk more about that later.
Hold on, Mayor, we have something.
I guess.
I thought someone might bring up your excellency now. We, we had the, the honor and the privilege to attend Mayor Smith's swearing-in, or it wasn't really a swearing-in, gavel passing for the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which makes Mayor Smith the first Arizona mayor ever to hold that chip, that position at a very large national level. So we were very proud, and he also got to celebrate his 35th anniversary with his lovely wife, Kim, which was very delightful. And-
Yes, and you remember, we have a history in this, in this, in this council of my anniversary following. If you remember, well, the first year we were in session, our Monday night, we had a council meeting, and I talked about taking her out for a nice dinner, and we went to the restaurant, and it was closed. That sort of describes my anniversary, but this time, we did not have that problem.
Nope.
It was delightful.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. It was very nice for you to be there, it was a little intimidating sitting up on the stand. I mean, I can handle all these big city mayors, that was easy, but looking down at the table and seeing council members and Chris Brady sitting there was-
We laugh at your jokes.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked you to come. Somebody had to.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We knew it was the last one.
Yeah, that's right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
That last check didn't, that last check bounced by.
Oh, well, should have known. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Quick executives, you want to move it? We'll do it next week. Okay. All right. A motion to adjourn from Councilmember Glover, second from the Vice Mayor. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. See you upstairs.